Okay, Commissioner Cray, present, Commissioner Sisser?
Present.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Present.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Present.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Present.
Acting Chair Ching?
Yeah.
And for the record, our Chair, Ostrowski is out this evening.
Thank you, Crin. Have we had a chance to look at the minutes?
I don't think there are any minutes.
I'm sorry, Adam.
I don't think there are any minutes this time. The 23rd.
Okay. It's simple, thank you. Director Eastwood, any communications amendments to the agenda tonight?
Neither.
Thank you. So, this is the part of the meeting which is the oral requests. This is a point in the agenda where members of the public may address the Commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the Commission. I don't see anybody on Zoom either, so not seeing or hearing anybody, I'll close the public hearing and move on to our two agenda items. So, the first public hearing is PLN 2021-193, initiation of zoning code text amendment, PLN 2021-193, to allow the Planning Commission to grant a reduction to the required sideyard setback for properties within the M1 light industrial and C2 general commercial zoning district. Project Planner, Daniel Farmer. And just before you kick off, Daniel, I've got to ask if there's any disclosures from the planning commissioners tonight on this particular item? Nope. So, Daniel, if you're ready?
Thank you. Everyone hear me all right? Excellent. So, this is a city-initiated request for the Plan Commission to initiate a zoning code text amendment to modify the provisions for setback standards for the M1 light industrial and C2 general commercial zoning districts to allow the Plan Commission some flexibility to allow reduced sideyard setback standards. As noted in the staff report, the city zoning code requires that any change to the zoning code be initiated by either the City Council or the Plan Commission. So, anything that staff needs to initiate is typically routed through either Plan Commission or City Council. In this particular case, as noted in the staff report, staff has identified several projects which propose reduced side yard setbacks. And current and past practice has been to consider either those reductions through a variance procedure or a plan development rezoning. These tools really are not intended for that function. Those tools are generally reserved for variance to deal with unusual site conditions and PD rezoning really intended to allow for a more comprehensive plan development where traditional zoning would not generally accommodate that. Neither of those tools is really intended to allow for simply reduced setback standards. So, in this particular case, let me share my screen here quickly. The initial thrust of the request, and again, this is just an initial take of how those two zoning district tables could be modified, revised, to allow for reduced side setbacks, consistent in the same manner that the Plan Commission can currently allow reduced rear setbacks. If the Commission would like additional criteria for this type of reduction, that's certainly something that staff can look at. And again, this is just simply an initiation to get the ball rolling on this process. The idea is to get a zoning ordinance adopted ahead of these projects actually being reviewed. And with that, I will take any questions that the Commission may have. Thank you.
Any questions to Daniel, please? Commissioner Crin?
Yeah, thanks, Daniel. This all sounds very reasonable, but I just, and I know, you know, we're just trying to be fair and it's good to be flexible, but I know we're also pushing these, making a big push for objective standards. So, this is different, I guess. How does this differ from our, from our quest for objective standards? It seems to be going the opposite direction in a way.
Well, the push for objective standards is very much relegated to residential projects and mixed use projects that include substantial residential components. Historically, the city does maintain wide discretion on non-residential projects, and that does recognize that these types of projects do very much present case-by-case circumstances that do need to be evaluated on a very individual level condition.
So, you think this would come up a lot, that there would be a request for?
Yeah, well, it's on the staff report. That's really what's instigating this request, is that we do have three applications that are looking to allow for reduced side setbacks, which staff believe is not an unreasonable request, given the constraints of those properties and current expectations from the development community.
And I saw that, but I mean, getting those three at once, was that kind of a fluke, or do you expect that to happen pretty regularly?
I'm likely to be a fluke, and this is likely an area of the code that will need to be revisited at some point or another.
All right, thank you.
My, my question is, Daniel, what's the significance between M1 and C2? Why not all of, all of the zones in commercial and all of the zones in manufacturing?
Good question. These are the two zoning districts that the three applications are located within. We didn't necessarily want to make this an expansive effort, given current staff constraints, so this is a very narrow update intended to address the applications at hand.
But, I'll try to word this generally. What, to me, it's unusual to see preemptive discussion. I guess, I feel like it's tailored to just these three applicants, and I'm not familiar with what those projects are, but I find it unusual that we're preemptively looking at these three. I don't recall ever having seen that before. This is somewhat rhetorical, but could you provide a little more color on why we're focused on those three applicants and adjusting the code for them?
Anyway, and Rob Eastwood, so it's, I guess, a couple things. So, when I started, I know typically when you get into codes, I always put things in two buckets, because I know early on I had heard from the Commission, hey, there's parts of the code that we really need to look at. One is kind of broader issues that you need to be holistic, step back, and because the threads are connected to each other and do it in a broad sense. Some things like our parking standards and some other things, I think we're doing broad sense. But the other instance is where projects come along and it just, it brings up questions in the code, like, that doesn't really make any sense. And I've advocated an approach, and I'd use this the county, if they're smaller, more surgical, just get them done. And you can do it two ways. Either one, you either get it done upfront and leave some distance before the project comes, so it's purely a legislative item, and you have to look holistically on how it impacts the city, which we'll do here. Or two, you pair it with the item as it comes forward, which is a bit more dangerous, because then you're convoluting a holistic change that affects the city and the project. So, in this instance, I know Daniel identified two projects that came up. And I'll just say that the past practice of Campbell has been, hey, just go ahead and rezonate to PD and we'll figure it out. And we're trying to get away from that, both with commission and council direction. It's just not a good way to provide consistency and standards to your applicants to PD zone everything. So, we see this as a better approach to go in and just change the code in a standard district, make it consistent with the practice we have. But to answer your question, on the projects, I would just advise the Commission, since those projects will come to you, and that's in a quasi judicial setting, where you'll have sequel and evidence and findings to make, I wouldn't deliberate on those tonight, because you wouldn't want a double jeopardy issue. But if you have any questions on the merits holistically of changing the setbacks, absolutely provide that feedback, we'll bring it back. The one last thing I'll add, I've never seen a jurisdiction before where staff has to ask permission to do a code amendment, that's kind of unusual. And then when we bring the code amendment, Commission and Council can say approve or deny. So, I think in the future, we might come back and ask to modify that. If staff sees some necessary modifications to the code, having to come and ask permission to do it is somewhat of an impediment outside of standard practice, but I'm editorializing a lot. The succinct answer to your question is, I advise just kind of giving feedback on the code amendments only.
Thank you for a response. I just, and I didn't mean to weigh in on future projects, that wasn't my intent, was more of how does this apply, or are we going to see this a lot? But I get that it's a focal, focused on making future projects easier. Thank you.
Commissioners, is that?
First of all, I think Andrew brings up a good point. I hadn't thought about the fact that there's multiple zoning districts in manufacturing and commercial, but I'm willing to, I guess, defer to the staff on this being specific. I do have one question. It's like, it seems to me that it's about these three projects, are they all because of the, that's about the five foot, more about the half the height of the building?
Well, I guess to the Director's point, we don't really want to get into specifics that could color your evaluation of those projects.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So, question for the Director, and I keep it general question, you know, not specific about the three applications, but so, I'm all for streamlining, and I'm all for making government more efficient. So, it seems like this action will do that. Instead of them starting the whole rezoning application and waiting a long time and going through the process to get the same results, we're just doing it, you know? And is that, you know, do I understand it correctly, basically the effect of what is in front of us?
Yes, it is. And Daniel can add to this. We just, these projects brought up an impediment to development in these districts, where we think the stakes are low on impacting community character and still provides, the change still provides some discretion for a commission to look at. So, the direct answer to your question is, it's intended to streamline and standardize our processes, so they support businesses coming in and doing, developing in these districts, with still, you know, having some discretion in there, not totally giving away, should projects come forward that you might consider certain site-specific circumstances.
So, yeah, so with, you know, I appreciate the comments that both Commissioner Rivlin and also Zizer brought up, you know, it is a concern, like, you know, why are we doing it for these three, but not for others? But I understand the benefits will affect future applicants too, you know, so it's not targeted, I just feel. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Adam?
I am enthusiastically in favor of this sort of thing. I think there are a lot of rough edges that we use discretion or PD rezoning to get around. I'm really happy to see staff doing this, so more, please. So, two questions. What's the discretionary decision that this would be attached to? Because there has to be some kind of, like, discretionary thing they're asking us to do.
Sure. So, these would be either assigned architectural review permits or conditional use permits for new buildings.
Okay, and? I guess I see that, so if I understand correctly, the reason why we're not going to ministerial, sort of the Director's discretion or objective standards on this is because we already use Planning Commission discretion for variant, sorry, not variances, for differences in rear setbacks, and we're just bringing this in line with that?
Well, there is no objective standards for these types of buildings. So, every single scenario, the Commission needs to really look at the site configuration, the architectural approach, the size, the massing, to really evaluate the appropriateness based on the findings for approval, both for assigned architecture review permits and conditional use permits. So, there's a tremendous amount of discretion on the Plan Commission's part, and this is simply one facet of that.
Okay, thank you. And for my part, I understand why this is being done as a minimal change, but it would seem reasonable to, given that C1 and C3 districts are like C2 districts, to make this somewhat broader, unless we're redoing everything in the next year or so, in which case, I can see why we keep it minimal.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Daniel, let me just ask one more, and I, and I, I'm all for being, you know, let's use common sense and be efficient, streamline the process, et cetera. But I, and this, you know, this is kind of coming in with the three projects, but I take it there's a reason that there were side yard setbacks set for the C1 and M2, whatever the zones are. Was there a reason for those setbacks, or did they just come along with the residential side yard setbacks?
We would need to do a deeper dive into the history of those setbacks. I suspect that they likely came out of the last general plan update 20 years ago. And we can provide a, if the record is clear enough, we can provide some level summary to explain the reasoning behind those setbacks, but we don't, I don't currently know that.
Okay, but it seems like this doesn't really come up too often, I guess, or else people have been doing PDs and variances, which doesn't make any sense, but I think I, I think I got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? With that, open the public hearing. Seeing or hearing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And open it to Commissioners for discussion.
I'm very much in favor of this. I, as folks here may be aware, I have a running list of things that seem to be clunky or not well-handled by our current code. And I think, you know, ideally, we tidy things up as we ran into them. As we noticed with our parking standards, sometimes we assume there was a really good reason for something, and there really wasn't in the first place. And we shouldn't assume that everything was put in place, you know, haphazardly, but this seems like a simple oversight, and objectively, like, in our current situation, it seems like a good idea. So, I'm very much in favor of this.
I would echo the same thing. I think, you know, it's common sense, the way we're doing it now is silly. I guess you can also be a double advocate and argue that we should have, you know, just a set side yard setback that works for everybody, and everybody knows going in what it is, but maybe even these kind of projects, discretion is the better part of valor, but I think this is fine, it makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a pragmatic and sensible balance to.
Yeah, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the fact that we're selectively doing it, but again, I'm willing to refer to the staff on the recommendation. And additionally, it's the changes that we will still have the opportunity to look at it and decide whether we want to grant permission or not. So, it does come back to the Planning Commission for us to take a look at it and confirm that's acceptable, so, so I'm good with that.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, that it's coming back to the Plan Commission. I just wonder about the purview focused on two specific zones because of future specific projects. I wonder if it should apply, maybe a future, the way I understand, this is, the staff will come back with a further recommendation, is that correct?
We would bring back the ordinance for your recommendation, and then we'll go to Council for adoption.
Thank you. I'd be interested to see if that ordinance adjustment would apply to future, larger set of zone zoning districts, not just M1 and C2 alone. I wonder if it should apply to others, or if there's a case why it should not, just an explanation on why C1 doesn't apply here. Or, yeah, I feel like there's still enough checks and balances that the Plan Commission can weigh in on each element that, you know, why focused on these two is my only thought, that would be my only adjustment or request. I think Commissioners is sure have a similar sentiment.
Any other comments to hear motion?
I'm happy to move that the Planning Commission take the following action to initiate a zoning code text amendment, PLN 2021-193, to allow Planning Commission to grant a reduction to the required side yard setbacks for properties within the M1 and C2 zoning districts.
Second, thank you. Could a roll call, please, or a vote, always vote, please, Crin?
Commissioner Cray?
Hi.
Commissioner Sisser?
Hi.
Commissioner Rivlin?
No.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Hi.
And Commissioner Kamkar?
Hi.
And Acting Chair Ching?
Hi.
So, it's a six, no, 511.
Passes five votes to one. Thank you. So, moving on to the second item, election of the 2022 Chair and Vice Chair. So, I'm quite sure what the procedure here is.
May I make a motion?
Please, Commissioners.
I would like to move to, to appoint Stuart Ching to the new Chair for the coming year.
Thank you. And do we have a vote on that?
Commissioner Cray?
Hi.
Commissioner Sisser?
Hi.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Hi.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Hi.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Hi.
And I imagine you'll be abstaining?
Oh, no, no, no. I don't want me doing this. Abstaining. Congratulations, Incoming Chair. Thank you.
Congratulations.
A new low for Campbell City, I'm afraid.
And if I may kind of close the book here on this, if I may make a motion for, that we nominate and elect Commissioner Adam Bookbinder as Vice Chair. Second.
Thank you. Could we have a, sorry, making you work on your last thing.
Commissioner Cray?
Hi.
Commissioner Sisser?
Hi.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Hi.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Hi.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Hi.
And Acting Chair Ching?
Hi.
Congratulations, Adam. Yeah, that's it. You got more votes, more popular. I think it should actually change, you can, you can do this. So.
All right. Chairman Ching, if I may. And I know that she's not here, but, you know, and I know that we got a great Chair, a new Chairperson and Vice Chair, but just wanted to say that Chair Ostrowski, what a tremendous job she really did. She's really got a knack for this stuff. She gets to the heart of matters, she can do compromise, and she did all this with adding to her family at the same time. It's just, just a tremendous job, and just want to make sure that she gets her due, even though she's not here.
Thank you, Commissioner Crin, I'd like to second that. She might have been here virtually, but certainly she had many virtues, and still does. I think I second that comment completely. Had a, it was an amazing job in very trying circumstances. She did it with grace and humor. I always remember thinking when Maggie commented on things, wish I'd thought about that, right? I think, thank you, Paul, for that, Commissioner Crin. And I think we'll get a chance, and hopefully in the next meeting, to present with the gab on officially with our thanks. And I think that finishes the business, just leaving this for the report to the Community Development Director. I have one indulgence to ask the Commission here. Can I just take one minute? Oh, yeah, break, I know this is embarrassing, so give me one minute, I'll be back very quickly. Thank you. Oh, thank you for that. And we'd just like to go on to the report to the community development directors. Please, Director Reeswood.
Okay, well, confess, the chair and I have been playing charades or games to allow the chair to get a nice present for our outgoing Corinne Shen. So I don't want to stand in the way. I'm going to go ahead and give this back to you. I think this is coming from the commission.
Apologies for subterfuge.
Just one or two bits for me. So I'm going to try and twist Corinne's arm to come back in January. We can do this formally also with acknowledgement of someone who's put in 28 years with Campbell. And a half, I'm sorry. I was trying to convince her to get two quarters, but just, let me see, one or two quick announcements. So on Thursday, the council will have the same presentation deliberation on the housing element that you had last week. The report's in, and then tonight we will give them a high-level summary of your feedback. And we'll make sure the commission CC'd on that, but I invite you to tune in to see where that goes. Overall schedule is going to the council this month and then per their direction, coming back in January to you again in the council for hopefully some final determinations on the housing sites that will start the process. I know Corinne reached out to you. It was my fault. I had a small miscommunication, but on the date that works for you to meet for a special meeting in January. And other than that, I can't think of, oh, I was just mentioning, we are doing final interviews and offers to planner candidates. I'm hopeful by next week, we'll have two offers accepted and have two new planners coming on board, which will double the size of the department in January. So make our customers a lot happier, make all of us a lot happier and working through the work plan and supporting the work we do and all of you. So that's all I have. I thank you again for seeing such again on such short notice and coming back and happy holidays.
Thank you, Director Reeswood, and close the meeting.
I have a, sorry, quick question. So earlier, like in your predecessor's tenure, I had asked about the planning commission suggesting zoning text amendments. And previously, we were told that staff had a very limited and strict work plan, and we could totally ask for things. We really shouldn't because staff couldn't spend any time on it. If I have a list of things like that that I've noticed, similar to what you brought up, should I send that to you? Should I try and suggest initiating his own text amendment? I know that planner, that staff is very constrained on time right now.
Yeah, I'd say all that is true. We so next year, especially with the staffing up, and I'm hoping to get some more resources in the department, we do aim on on starting work on some major code updates. What's driving it is the objective standards, which I think, you know, is on the work plan. But with that, I think we've had a lot of ideas into addressing things like PD zoning and some of the other things that just systematically have to be done. So I, so two things. One is the formal way is, you know, the council adopts the work plan here and suggestions, ideas. Generally, that work plan impact should go to council, and there's an opportunity for that, I think, in the spring. Two is if you just want more feedback from our department on, hey, is this a big issue? Is this a small issue? Can this fit in your work plan? Can it not? More than invite to to provide that feedback, and then we can sort of advise on how the department would go about it or the best way to go about it. Thank you.
So on your list here about the, what Kevin and city council on Tuesday, the seventh interim ordinance to adopt urgency measures to implement Senate Bill number nine, could you kind of briefly?
Oh, yes. Sure. Yeah, I thought I hit this last week, but I can talk about it again. So on the December 7th, they adopted interim emergency ordinance implementing text amendments that implement SB 9 and Campbell's Code. First off, I'll say huge kudos to the, to Daniel Fama, who wrote the code and the ordinance. So a little plug here. Again, we have two planners. We have a population of 45,000. I think we have the lowest ratio planner to population in the entire Bay Area. This is my little plug for Daniel. Daniel got ahead of it, wrote the code, wrote a staff report, and sent it up being a template for not only the cities in the South Bay, but most of the Bay Area. We've had ABAG staff and others come in and say, wow, that's such a great ordinance. That's such a great template. We're using that and showing it to other cities to follow. So I know he's not on the the call, but again, huge kudos to our senior planner who's done really great work on this. To answer your question, city council, it was an emergency ordinance required a forfeit vote, was adopted. It's in effect for 45 days. We will come back in early January, February with a normal ordinance, which goes through the public hearing process. We'll go to the planning commission council. It, we anticipate generally the same codes that were in the urgency ordinance. So that, so long story short, the ordinance is on the books for now, and we'll come back to you probably at that January meeting, maybe February with the ordinance that goes to the normal process for adoption.
Thank you, and kudos to Daniel for getting, getting that out there. Okay, with that, wish everybody happy Christmas. Happy holiday season. I can't say happy Christmas now. Happy Christmas and New Year.